Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Alejandra Barasa. I am the president of Highscope Educational Research Foundation, and it is a pleasure to welcome you today to Young Children's Ideas about Learning. It is part of the Segregation by Experience, Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades book study. This roundtable, we are honored that it is moderated by Amy Kabinetz from NPR. You can purchase a copy of Segregation by Experience, Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades from highscope.org or from your local bookstore. It is my honor to welcome Anya Kabinetz, who is an education correspondent for NPR. Anya has covered education for many years, including for NPR, where she co-created the podcast Life Kit Parenting. She speaks, writes, and thinks about learning and the future. Her newest book is The Stolen Year: How COVID Changed Children's Lives and Where We Go Now. Welcome, Anya.
Thank you so much. I'm really pleased to be here sharing the work of these great researchers. We're here today to discuss the book A Segregation by Experience, Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades. And we have the two co-authors, Jennifer Keys Adair and Kyomi Sanchez-Sudhuki Colgrove. And Jen is at the University of Texas at Austin. I first came across her research several years ago when I was researching a story and became a podcast episode about the 30 million word gap and was really amazed by her firsthand observations of classrooms. Kyomi Sanchez-Sudhuki Colgrove is at Texas State University, and we're joined also by Molly McManus at San Francisco State University. So we're going to dive right in. I found this book to be such a good read. I don't read a lot of education theory books. Maybe I should read more of them. But really, what was so exciting to me to see how candid you were about the surprises that you came across in the research process, and particularly when it came to the children. And I think there's a lot of lip service in the early ed world and in education in general to listening to children and to really unpack how hard that actually can be to do, especially when children aren't telling you what you think they're going to tell you. I think it's just really eye-opening. So I want to start by asking, you know, why did you decide to include children in the study? And why did that prove to be so hard?
So hi, everyone. And first of all, thank you to Highscope for having us back. And thank you so much to Anya for moderating this. When you're deep into research or when you're trying to figure something out, it really matters when journalists and people that you admire take an interest in your research. So I just want to thank you, Anya, for doing that. And it's, it's, all of these things really help kind of propel us forward. So I'm, I'm, today, myself and Molly and Kyomi, we were the three that ended up doing the interviews with all the children, the over 100 children that we interviewed for this book. And from my perspective, there are, weirdly, there are very few early childhood research studies that actually ask children what they think about learning. It seems like that wouldn't be the case, but it actually is. And so because we were going to be using videos and we were going to be trying to understand how people saw the practices in the videos, like how they interpreted different types of teaching approaches, we wanted to include children since we don't hear from them, but we're always making decisions for them. The tricky part is how to do that with a five-year-old, six-year-old, and figuring out ways for them not to be bored or to be engaged enough that they would want to tell us stuff. And so it did prove more difficult than we thought, and also not for the reasons that we guessed that it would be difficult. So we'll get into that later. But it was, it was definitely, it was definitely wanting to include their voices in what would eventually happen with the, with the research. And if Kyomi and Molly, either of you have something to add about why we wanted to include children. Molly's whole dissertation was all about children. Like, it was just interviews with children, so.
So, well, thank you for having us all here. It's nice to be back. The process of interviewing children or thinking why children were important, it's that there's, like Jen said, there is a need to have their voices heard, especially when it comes to learning preferences, thinking about choices. And as we were working with the children in El Roble, it came up more like this, definitely a need that we needed to interview all the children that we could find in the other sites as well to get to hear what they actually created this whole chapter about of their knowledge and understanding. So it seems like it's important. And the other thing, as an early childhood student back in the day, many years ago, there wasn't a lot of information about children's thoughts, even though we're in the field of early childhood. So it was really like something crucial to gather and have opportunities for them to voice what they thought about their own experiences.
Wonderful. Go ahead, Anya. I think, what I was going to say, I think it's hard to know if it's why we interviewed children or what we've learned since, like, why we should continue interviewing children. So I'm sure it will come up again later. Thanks.
So, so tell us about these children. Who were they? How did you choose them in comparison to the group that you were actually filming?
So we actually tried to find schools that were very similar to the school, like El Roble. So we tried to think of children who were first graders. They were immigrant, children of immigrant or immigrant children, schools that have African-American families, Latinx families, thinking in the same economic and background. So we really looked for those schools throughout Texas and tried to find similar spaces so we can also ask them and interview them. So that was the, the kind of the rationale in trying to find a place down in the border, in central and south Texas with very similar, again, demographics to the group in El Roble. So we can actually have more like a comparative opportunity with their responses.
We also know that children have very different learning experiences depending on what they look like, and we already knew that. So we knew that if we showed this film to children across lots of different groups, we might not get a good understanding for a particular community. So we focused our attention on children of Latinx immigrants and African-American children who were in the same schools. And we wanted to, we wanted to go more deeply and try to understand what they thought because they are the most controlled, like their, their school experiences are the most heavily controlled. And so that was the idea, was to go to demographically similar schools. What we didn't anticipate is everything that happened after. But that was, that was really the communities that we cared about.
Great. So, so let's talk about the mechanics of this. And as a journalist, I can relate. I mean, you know, actually getting, you know, useful commentary out of children this age. And these are, these are first graders, essentially, five, six, seven. How did you start and how did you have to modify your interviewing technique as you went along?
So I'll start, and I think all of us had experiences. And again, at the end, Molly ended up interviewing with us, but then went on to do her, her own dissertation study, just interviewing children, which was an incredible, just an incredible dissertation. But we thought, we thought that if we kind of, we went to the same demographic schools when we talked to the children and we showed them the videos, we thought that they would be either really excited about what the kids were doing because it was so active and happy and kids were talking to each other and moving around. We thought the kids watching it would be really excited. But that turned out not to be the case. And their responses were possible, I think, because of the way that we did it. So what we would do is there, the adults watched like a 20-minute version of Miss Bailey's Classroom. But when we did it with kids, we took four scenes from that 20-minute videos. And each of those scenes were like two minutes, maybe, maybe three minutes. And so we chose the four scenes that adults talked about the most. And we showed them those scenes. And after we showed them the scenes, we'd watch like a three-minute film. And then we would talk about it. And we had questions and we asked the same questions and showed the same films to all 100 children. And the videos worked kind of like a prompt. Like, it was better than a research, it was better than an interview question where children would just be like, I don't know. Or they would like, they'd get distracted or something. But like, instead, they're very used to watching screens and movies and shows. So they would watch the video of kids doing stuff. And they had lots to say, not just afterwards, but like during, while they were watching. But yeah, that technique seemed to work pretty well. Molly, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I think it did work well. And at the time, it did not feel like it was working well. Like, the ways that children were responding to the film were kind of negative. They're like, what's happening? Like, I, I'm not comfortable with what I'm seeing. And sometimes like really short responses too, like, that's not okay, or something like that. And as like the interviewers, we were just like, is this data? Like, is this going to be useful? And just kind of had to push through that until when you get the data from like 100 students and look at it and we can like see the uniformity to it. That was clear that it was really informative. But in the moment, it was like kind of uncomfortable because it was, we were used to adults watching the video and being like, this is awesome. Like, I love this. Or I do this in my classroom. And the kids were like very opposite. So it felt strange and like, this might not be working in the moment.
I should mention before we go any further that you can put questions in the Q and A or just general comments in the chat. But please feel free to do that. We'll make sure to get them, get to them by the end. So yeah, in the book, I really enjoyed the confidence that you expressed in the children's results, that the fact that at the beginning, it didn't seem like you were getting useful feedback. But you did persist, and that feedback added up to something that actually was probably one of the most surprising, wouldn't you say, the most surprising findings of the whole book?
Absolutely. Yeah. And they, we, maybe what we could do is show a quick clip and show you what happened. So we have a clip. And if any of you attended the first week, you may recognize this because I think we showed it, this little clip example. But I'm going to show it, we can show it again in this new context. So we can show you what adults and children alike both watched, but their responses were really different. And we can kind of give you a sense of, at least as researchers, and I'm sure as teachers, you felt the same way, where the, the expectation you had going in for what was about to happen was so different than what you expected that you're not quite sure what you're going to do now. So that, let me show you the clip and we can talk about what happened. All right. So in this clip, this is Miss Bailey's Classroom. And those of you that are reading, you'll recognize Mary is one of the people in this first scene. And she's the same Mary that has the volcano experience. But let's, she's, this is at the beginning of the day. She is trying to figure out what the number 21 is because she's writing it in her journal. And she has a response to this. She, she tries to figure this out. And then we'll do a little bit of guessing in the chat for a second to see what you think, what you notice. Okay, so maybe in the chat, can you all share what you saw? Like, what stood out to you when you were watching? And then I'll, we can talk a little bit about what the kids saw. What did you see in that clip? What did you see children doing? What did you notice? What practices did you like or not like? What stood out to you? Yeah, there were, there was lots of things going on, but they seemed to be involved with each other. It was pretty relaxed, helping each other, calm chatter like that. Very engaged. Lots of cooperation, lots of engagement. So your, your responses, these are fantastic, what you're noticing. And these responses that you're offering are very similar to, right, Molly and Kyomi? They're really similar to what educators and parents and administrators noticed when they watched this scene. And what I can do is share what the kids said. So remember that the adults, as we've talked about before, like, the adults really liked these practices. And yeah, they see, they saw a lot of things that you're noticing. But when the kids watched it, their interpretation was really, really different. And I'm going to show you a very typical conversation. So in one particular group, again, this was very similar across all the groups. But here's one example. So this was in a group I happened to be leading. And then maybe Molly and Kyomi can share their experience showing this clip and seeing what they talked about. So I, we would always ask them the same questions. And I'd ask them in this focus group if they, if they thought the children were learning. And Diego says, no, because only the teacher goes up. This was, this was right after they watched this scene that you just watched. Do you feel like that was good learning? No, no. You don't think it's right to go up there? That's me asking. Marcelo says, no, because the little kids went up to teach the kid. That's not right. I ask, can you do that in your class? No, because our teacher gets mad. Do you wish you could do that? Yes. When your friends have questions or when you have questions, what do you do? You raise your hand. So their response was so different than the adults. And I think what started to get com-
Something they conceptualized is talking versus the learning. And how that, that is very problematic. And we really need to think about in our classrooms, how much noise? Because to them was noise, how much noise we actually get to have so children can, can learn. And then the whole movement thing that get up and help somebody, that was also like, there's no way you can get up without asking permission, raising your hand, waiting for the teacher to say, okay, Kyomi, you can go, because that doesn't happen. And so there's a whole section in the book about helping and parents' ideas of helping and children. And we have really good interaction with the children about this helping thing and, and the questioning that we ask. So I think in this particular one is the helping getting up and conceptualizing learning as quiet as very problematic in all the responses or most of the responses of the children.
So there's some interesting things coming in on the chat and also the Q and A that I want to bring in here. One person had a question about, did you check the portrayal of the classroom practices that the students had of their own classrooms? Were they really this restrictive and this quiet? Or is that more an aspiration that the, that the students had about what learning was supposed to be like? Because, yeah, that's one question.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Probably, I don't, I, I will say, one of the most depressing parts of actually the observations of the classroom. Jen, Molly, when you say, we were down in the border. And, and so I remember we entering into this classroom and it was so quiet. It was really quiet. The children were working and something, but it was so extremely quiet. I call it creepy quiet because it was so quiet. And so I remember this child working toward the wall. So he's kind of facing the wall with his sheet or war sheet he was working on. And I got close and I said, so I whisper, right? Why you guys are so quiet over here in this classroom? And he said, because if we speak, our thoughts leave our heads. The brain or head or something. And I remember like we literally crying coming back to Austin just thinking about that thought, like, if you speak, your thoughts leave your head. And if I'm a five-years-old or a six-year-old and I hear my teacher saying that to me, I'll be super quiet. I want my thoughts in my head. I don't want those thoughts to go away, right? They're going to leave my head. What's going to happen to that? So we, we were like really depressed and shocked. And again, these are bilingual students. So it was, it was quite depressing. So yes, we have opportunities to see the classrooms too.
You were kind of angry too, right? Because, I mean, do you guys want to comment to the white supremacist aspect of this that you made so pointed in the book?
Yeah, I think for me, there was a lot of anger. And I think I was surprised by their answers because I, I was pretty sure they weren't going to have a similar experience to Miss Bailey. And that's because it took months to find a classroom where children, brown and black children could use their agency and their learning. That just finding a classroom taught us a lot about how, how rare this is. So I knew that we were going to take the film to places where they weren't going to have a similar experience. But what I expected is for the kids to be like kind of jealous or like, oh, that would be so fun. But that's not, it was so, this is by six years old. They are very sure that what they are, the way they're supposed to be learning, they're so sure in that idea that they could actually argue back to us. Because at some point in the research, we got so frustrated. I got, well, I should say, I'll take ownership of, I got super frustrated. So I'd ask like terrible research questions, like, are you sure? Like, are you sure that you think that's bad? Really difficult. And so they were very confident in their answers. So by six years old, they've figured out the way they're supposed to be learning. But we know that the way they're being taught to learn is, is taking them away from leadership, from initiative, from all of the types of skills that is about liberation and it's about power. And so the, how early they are segregated from their, their own agency, from their own ability as a community and as individuals to change their situations or to advocate for themselves and their community, like, that's so early for them to be really sure that the way they're learning is how learning works, when we know that's not how learning works. So the lie of that, the falsity of that, yeah, you can probably hear in my voice. It makes me super angry. And to me, that seems like a, a really successful tactic of white supremacy to have so many children think that learning is about being quiet and still and compliant at age six. That's a very successful strategy that, that white children are not experiencing the same way. That their initiative, their calling out an idea is praised, not suspended or sent to the principal's office or sent to look at the wall. So yeah, I think that's like, it's a, to me, it's a very obvious, has a very obvious link to white supremacy. So, and we can, there's, part of it is the, the, the confidence of the answer. And I can give you another example. And then I think we, I'd love to hear, I'd love to open it up. I don't know, Anya, if you feel like this, but I'd love to hear some of the questions and maybe other people's experiences too, as children having these kinds of experiences. But the confidence level was so high, which again, led to anger and frustration and sadness on our part as the researchers. But there, these are some of their like responses as they're watching. They talk a lot, they're like the, the quickness of a child to an adult stranger to tell that the movie that adult stranger brought is trash. It's terrible. That's a lot of confidence for a kid. That's how sure they are. They need to sit down. If you talk, your knowledge will leave your brain, which Kyomi talked about. They're not following the rules. The, also, like, part of it was from the outside. We watched kids very sure of the rules and assuming that everyone has the same rules. When we know because of white supremacy and how things are set up, everybody doesn't have the same rules. And that's not, that's not right. But the kids revealed all of this. This is nothing that the adults told us. If we had just interviewed the adults, we'd have been like, oh, they have all these different ideas. But what we learned is adults are saying one thing and kids are telling us the truth in a lot of ways. Like, their, what they said, like Molly was talking about, what the parents said, I mean, what the educators said they were doing in their classroom is really different than what the kids revealed is actually happening.
So I would like to add that too, that the rules is one thing, but there's also consequences when you break the rules. So children also talk about that, like, you will get in trouble, this thing will happen. The teacher will change your plan. So there's all these consequences to breaking the rules. So they really believe that this is the way they need to learn.
If you want to add, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Anya.
Oh, just do you want to play this clip before we go?
Yeah. I can set this up a little bit. Molly, if you want to add anything to this, feel free. So when we were analyzing, Molly and Kyomi were both graduate students and I was a brand-new professor. So, I mean, no offense to any of us, but we really didn't know what we were doing. We were trying to figure it out as we went. And one of the things that happened was the kid, we, we went to all of these focus groups with kids, all these first graders all over Texas, and they all said the same thing. And we were, we were sad by it and we kind of wanted to avoid it. So we actually analyzed dozens and dozens and dozens of interviews with adults before we even touched the children's. It's like we didn't want to do it. We were, we were putting it off. And when we eventually did, we started noticing that not just that they didn't like the practices, but that they thought they were very bad. And I wanted to play you an example of, in one particular focus group, one of the kids yelled out like he was in a horror movie. Don't go in there. They like yelled out like, that's bad, 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 bad. And I remember being in there while he was saying that. And he was yelling at the screen and the kids, and the other kids in the focus group started joining in. And they were all yelling like, bad, 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 bad. But we had no idea, like, nothing in the film seemed bad enough for them to be yelling that it was bad. And we couldn't figure out what exact moment it was that they were responding to. So we, I'm going to play you the clip of them actually watching the film and see if you can hear when they say bad, bad, bad. And then I'm going to show you the clip that they said was bad, bad, bad and see if you can figure out what they thought was bad. Should we try it? Let's see if anyone can find it. Because really, it, well, let me, let me let you hear it. And then I'll talk to what you did. Do you want to, is there anything I left out, Molly, to set this up?
No, just that it took like some microanalysis-
Um, no, just that it took like some micro analysis of the film to like the transcript and the film. And we're like, what are they trying to find? And we finally like pinpointed this one moment that they were responding to. It was challenging.
It's very, we had to find highly technically skilled people to slow down the audio, slow down the video. So we could match up what you're about to hear, the kids actually in the focus group watching the video. We could match it up with the mo, exact moment in the film where, that they think is bad. So here's what it sounds like when they're responding. So if you can hear that, he's talking about it being bad, bad, bad. But we don't know what moment. So I'm going to show you the clip of, and it's in within this like 40 seconds. And see if you can guess, there's not a video, it's just the, it's just the audio recording of them talking. But now I'm going to show you the clip that they were saying was bad. See if you can figure out the moment or the thing that they're responding to. Because it took us a few weeks to figure this out. So see, you're probably all smarter than we were. Can everyone see that?
All right, so let's see who's ready to make a choice.
Okay, so somewhere in there, there was something very bad. Um, what do you think it was? Can you tell us in the chat, what do you think was they were responding to? Maybe the child interrupting at the end? Kid laying down when they were reading? They did point that out as being, uh, being, um, suspect. But that wasn't the bad, bad, bad. The tapping of the marker on the table? Other gases? Child asking a question? Child taking the magnets? Reaching across, hands on the table? Some interruption? All right, well, are you ready to see what it, none of you were correct? Everyone didn't get it. But maybe you'll see it when I show you what's really funny about, well, I don't, it's not funny actually. But what was striking to us is that the thing that they noticed is less than six seconds long. And it was just supposed to be filler. Like when you're making a film, you have to sometimes have like little pieces you put in to transition from one thing to another thing. And it was just a little, we didn't even think about it. We just put it in because it transitioned us between shots. In the video, we didn't even think it was important what happened, what they noticed. So let me show you, um, the, the exact thing that they're, that they're noticing. All right, can you see this as I move it? It's that. It's that moment. It's that moment of touching the mouse of the person at the computer that's not your computer. And what was crazy is when we slowed everything down, we actually heard that the kid didn't say just that it was bad, bad, bad. Um, but what they actually ended up saying was this. I wanted to show you the wrong thing. It was a little bit, um, it ended up being longer than we, um, than what we had originally heard when we slowed it all down. What they actually said, um, was that, oh, that's bad, 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 because that's the button. But that's only for the teacher. Um, and this particular school was a technology magnet school, where it was really supposed to be preparing children to use technology. But they had, the first grade teachers had, from, the first grade teachers had kind of decided that they needed to train the kids how to use the, the mouse. So children weren't touching the mouse, only the teacher. So when the child leaned over to touch the mouse of the student next to them, they noticed that and called it out that it was bad. So this tells, um, I can start and, and then maybe Molly can share and Kiomi can share. But this taught me a lot about how observant children are, that they noticed that. And we had spent one year putting together this film and, and watching it, and we didn't even notice that. That's how cued in they are to obedience and compliance and what they're supposed to be doing and what people expect of them. They are very, very keen observers and their ability to notice that told us a lot about the severity of that control. And also their, their under, that messaging that they receive from that level of control. Um, so that's a, that to me was quite startling when we figured that out. Molly, do you want to share kind of your response to finding this out?
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know what else I'm going to say on top of that. But the, the keen observation, um, I think it also like explains when you think about like how after like two or three years in a system, how was this already so ingrained and internalized? Um, I think this experience is of no, noticing how closely they're observing helps explain, um, that yes, after only like kinder in first grade or pre-K, kinder, first grade, um, which you know, three years is a long time, but the level at which they're observing and taking things in, um, it just makes a huge impact. And I think just how intentional we have to be from the first moments in the classroom, what we're communicating to students implicitly, um, really matters.
So, um, I do want to bring in our audience, um, there's been in the Q and A, there's a, a lot of hypothesizing about alternate explanations for this, this discrepancy, um, or the expectations expressed by the children. Um, before we get to that, you know, in the, in the chat, there's just so many raw examples and experiences being shared by people of their own, what that felt like for them as students, perhaps students of color being silenced or feeling like they weren't, um, belonging in school. Um, we also have a comment about the makeup of this panel, um, which I want to acknowledge. Um, and I think is a, you know, is a good point who we're bringing into the room. These are, you all are the co-authors who created this research project and I'm the interlocutor. So that's, that's the personnel that's here. So, um, but it's, you know, it's always a good point to think about. And, uh, in the Q and A in particular, um, one person asks, and you guys addresses, address this, is this cultural? So like, are their parents telling them to be quiet? And that's why they think being quiet is the right thing. Um, and then there's this question of, is it this stage of thinking that they're at developmentally? They see learning and they think it's only this one thing because they're in a concrete stage. Um, and someone else asks, is it really white supremacy or is it class? Or is it, um, you know, a specific kind of like charter school discipline, um, model that we're, that we're looking at here? So I'd love to have you guys kind of address those questions.
Um, I can talk about, uh, this idea of like, uh, other explanations because I think, um, that was something I was really interested in. Like, we do have this theory that it's, um, the learning experiences that are being offered to students, influencing their ideas about, um, learning and what they were telling us. Um, but to more like concretely understand that, seeing children or asking the same questions to children in other types of classrooms seemed like it would be like really informative. And so that's what I went on to do with my dissertation study, um, is look for schools. Um, and I, I also noticed a pub, a couple of people are bringing up these like no, no excuses charter, um, con, texts. So look at a school like that serving, um, children that super structured and, and strict, kind of like the ones we saw in the study, but also alternatives. What about classrooms where, that are serving Latinx immigrant children, but they do have agency to move and help each other and talk, um, and kind of guide their learning in different ways? So for that study, I was able to find a range of classrooms. Um, and what I found is that depending on the type of classroom children are in, they have different ideas about learning. So in the really structured, strict charter classroom, children were saying almost identical things to the children in this study. So again, um, Latinx first graders from immigrant families. Um, but in another classroom, and which children had a lot more agency to move around, um, a lot more translinguaging between Spanish and English, um, collaborating, that kind of thing. Um, when I showed them these exact films and asked questions like, um, is it okay to help your friends or like, can you be learning when you're working together? They would kind of look at me like, yeah, duh, like why are you, yes, like, why are you asking me these like kind of obvious questions like, yes, you can help when you learn? Like, um, yes, you can, like talking and communicating is part of learning. Um, and, and so that comparison kind of shows that those classroom experiences are at least part of what is influencing children's ideas about learning and like what they're reporting out.
So what about this idea that there's cultural expectations that are influencing this?
Yeah, I think, Kiomi, if you could talk about what you learned from parents.
So one of the things that, um, as we show the film to the parents too, there were many things that parents like and appreciated. So one of the sections in the book talks about helping out and the idea that children can help one another. They've learned from one another. Their personal experiences are usable when they're in the classroom, so they can use what they know. Um, so parents really, and really like, like for example, the scene that, that all of you got to see. Uh, because of that, they're able to help each other. And this idea of collaboration among community, uh, is something that parents express in the, um, the immigrant community that we interview. The idea that we want our children to help one another. It's good to do that. You never know when they're going to need help and they're going to receive help from one another. Um, helping one another is not for something, so there's no reward in the things they do. So they have a whole understanding of how important this was and how those children in those classrooms had the opportunity to do that. The other thing I want to point out that parents, many of, all of the parents that we interview, none of them have a schooling, formal schooling experience here in the US. So many of the immigrants came here and their children were kind of the first times that they experienced the school through their children. So that was also like a learning, uh, curve for parents here. Uh, but one of the things that we also noticed from teachers is this idea that we need to train them. And while children are not trained, we can now provide this more agentic opportunity. So really there's no opportunities for te, teachers to see how capable children are. So if they think that this obedience work and they're doing this thing and kind of, um, introducing to this thing, they think learning is best, children just are doing it because that's what they're experiencing. But that doesn't mean that that's their culture or that they're supposed to behave that way. It's that they have no expectation that they can be more than what they're asking them to be. And I think that was one of the things that it was so, um, amazing to listen to parents because they're like, I would really like these kids are so capable to do this stuff. They can learn from one another. So I think all of that show that children are more capable than what they really teachers give for grant, grant or think of them. And so that cultural thing is not necessarily like that at all. And so that's what we were trying to show in, in a particular section in that chapter too.
I think Kiomi and I, every time that we've talked about this, or Ms. Bailey, who will be joining us for the last, um, the last roundtable, she'll join us again. She gets the same question about whether or not this is cultural. And I think what's hard about that, that question is, um, is that it's, the children's answers were much more aligned with their teachers than their parents. The things that they noticed, the way they responded, how they talked about things was much more aligned with parents than children. And so we know that school can really do a lot of damage to families, um, when they're doing things that are opposite of what a family enjoys. I don't think there's any cultural group that's quote, quiet. I think that's something that we do to justify some of the practices that we offer. There are, communities are together, they're with each other, they're, there's a lot of range within cultural communities. There isn't one way of being any particular cultural group. But in US schools, are certain communities asked to be very quiet and are penalized if they're not? Absolutely. So to me, and, um, I think, um, we can ask Ms. Bailey the same question. This seems less about culture and much more about power. Um, and people having different access to power.
Um, there's a request for, um, take home, uh, knowledge, which I think is really important to get to. So, um, we're students at Wayne County Community College District. We're enrolled in a practical course. What techniques can we use as a result of this conversation?
Well, first of all, welcome. Thanks for being here. Um, I'd say a few things, I think, um, one thing we've learned is to find ways of offering agency to young children, having them be able to choose or make decisions about, you know, how they learn something or the way that they learn something, what they're learning. Um, and then learning how to observe. So practice watching videos, we have some on our site, there's lots of videos to watch. But getting better at observing without judgment, just observing what they're interested in, what their capabilities are, what they're good at. Um, and learning how to, to build on those things rather than finding ways to open up the classroom so that kids are able to make more decisions. Um, in the book, there's many, many, many examples of what this looked like in Ms. Bailey's classroom and some of the strategies that she used. But what we find is when, when you, we start offering children more agency, we see, see more of their capabilities and then that makes us more excited and it's more fun. And then we give them more agency because we see they can handle it. Um, so that would be mine. I don't know if others have some.
The one thing too, that, um, this is something that, um, some, my students have been reading the book too. And one of the things that we talk a lot is these no intervening and kind of holding yourself, almost like physically hold yourself to get into something and just trust the kid and see what's going to happen. Um, and, uh, seeing how capable they are and just trusting them a little bit more before you jump in. Because, um, I think that's something that we teachers do a lot. And it's almost like a hold yourself a little and just see what's going to happen. And I think that could be like, uh, like a really amazing thing to do and see how, and, and see and learn from them. So that, that would be one that I would like to mention.
And also like thinking really carefully about curriculum, like what, like, you know, all of you are lucky to be connected to Highscope. And the ways and how children are positioned in Highscope as being capable, as being smart, as being able to, to, to own and, and direct their own learning to an extent. Um, the way kids get to help each other and that, that kind of decision-making about what you're going to take on as, as helping structure the class. I think that's a really important, another important strategy or technique to think about.
Um, and I'll just add that I think it's, it's also really like as an educator, we've all been teachers and, um, in the classroom and have ideas of now about what, um, what we want for children, um, that like reflects like their communities and what we know about learning. what we want for children that like reflects like their communities and what we know about learning. But that, that's often always what we were doing in our own classrooms. And there's just, there's a lot of reflection with doing this work and like humility in the ways that like we, we didn't do what we now understand to be like really humane and supportive. But also just like being really self compassionate. A lot of you are sharing some like painful experiences in your own schooling. And what we experience in K-12 really influences what we turn around and think teaching is in our own classrooms. So especially in like teacher education programs, like finding that space in your class and your assignments to like do that reflection and think about like, what do you want to take forward? Because it was like empowering and what do you want to do differently because it was harmful? And it takes time, but I think if you don't start there, then you go into the classroom with all these like assumptions that you haven't been critical of and eventually you're going to have to unpack that. And, and it's hard work and personally I can say sometimes it's like painful work to, to do that, but I think it's really important.
I would, one more I would add is, is, is practicing getting to know parents and having conversations with parents and caretakers and, and getting better at asking them what they want for their children. Like at the end of the day, whether or not we have assumptions about what communities want what, we should just, we should ask them, we should talk to them, we should humble ourselves enough to go ask. And I think as a white woman doing this kind of work, the research team and the families and the teachers and the kids, I wouldn't be able to understand 95% of this if I, if we didn't ask them. We need their input. They don't need to just decorate cupcakes and come to parent teacher conferences. We need their input on curriculum and parents are, all the parents we interviewed, at first it took them a second because they're never asked what kind of curriculum they want for their children or what kind of learning experiences they want, or what kinds of social skills they really want their children to be good at. But we could ask them and I think as we get better at that, that can really inform our own teaching. That is definitely a skill.
I love that. It's deceptively simple. I was asked to just give a couple, you know, because my job is to talk to students and teachers around the country. And I think just one thing I want to highlight here, I mean, you guys are really putting a learning mindset into action with this book. You're, you're showing your own learning, you're showing your work and that's really instructive. I think for any, any teacher and trainer or anyone wants to know more about education, that's just your modeling, how it should be. The other thing I really thought of is, you know, you talk about this, how, like the idea that's put forward is that the kids will learn to behave and then they will earn the right to have more agency. And that's exactly backwards because what we do is we give them the agency and then they, and they feel that they, it belongs to them and then they can use it. And I think that's something as parents we can be guilty of, as teachers, as schools, we can be guilty of. And I also think about this in terms of the pandemic and the recovery process that we're barely beginning, which one of the major things I learned in, in reporting the book that I have coming out about kids in the pandemic is when we switched to remote, the social contract of school was broken and the behavioral control over school was broken. So when kids are doing remote, they can stand up and walk away and you cannot coerce them. And so it was, it really knocked the whole system for a loop. And now that we have kids back in the class and a lot of, who really seceded and, and voted with their feet out of that was preschool kids and young kids in particular, which really just showed, we can't go back and do that again. Because if it didn't work in remote, it's not going to work as well back in the classroom. And there is a lot of anecdotal reports of really intense behavior issues because kids have not been socialized to conform into the classroom for two years in the same way. So is this an opportunity to actually step back and, and say, what kind of classroom could we have? Where we actually have consent and we have free participation by everyone? And the recognition of kids' actual capabilities in getting their, getting them on, you know, getting their agency and getting them on the side of learning because everyone has these shared goals for kids and it's not about controlling them, it shouldn't be about controlling them. They're not going to sign up for that again. So that's what this makes me think of.
What a powerful conversation. We, I want to thank Anya Kaminitz, Jennifer Keazader, Molly McManus and Kyomi Sanchez Colgrove just for joining us today with this important conversation. We want to remind our participants that they, you will receive a certificate of attendance and it will be emailed to you in tomorrow after this roundtable. A recording of this conversation will be posted on Highscope's YouTube channel and in the video archive on our blog, theplayground@highscope.org, in our playground. Of course, we remind you that you can purchase a copy of Segregation by Experience, Agency, Racism and Learning in the Early Grades at our highscope.org store or from your local bookstore. We also want to remind you that we are excited to continue this important discussion of segregation by experience. Join us on March 16th at 2:00 PM for our next session that focuses on racism and white supremacy in early childhood education. Highscope is proud to promote books that really bring in important topics in the field. Please also save the date for our 50th, our international conference that we are very excited to celebrate this year on, from May 11th through the 13th in Detroit. And we will also have virtual and on-demand sessions. Please register, we'll be opening soon. Explore more at highscope.org, International Conference. And also to remind you that Highscope is a nonprofit organization. Donate to invest in elevating early childhood education. Your donation to Highscope ensures our research and development of innovative assessments, curriculum and professional development tools and resources will empower the next generation of dedicated early childhood educators. We want to thank you very much for your participation.